People running around because they don't see any outlet. So I will leave, leave that it for now. So that's where I am with the issue. I wanted to bring up, we have an item on number 12. I won't speak to it right now, wait till we get to consent agenda items. A resolution appointing Mr. Anthony DiPuccio to the position of waste generated representative to the Hamilton County Solid Waste Management District Policy Committee. And I'll be making some comments on that as we move forward to that area. And that's all that I have right now. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. And the healthcare policy that you read, and I thank you for that research. Or just as the administration, I don't know, I think we're, since the overturning of Roe versus Wade, I think it turns things back to the states, state rights. And we're overseen by the Ohio Revised Code. Unlike at the city, they have home rule and certainly I'm sure they will have to legally deal with some issues, but they have home rule. The county government, we are not home rule. We are kind of a, I call it a franchise. You can't go to, you know, McDonald's and say, I want to add some seasoning if you might want to, because everything is kind of a franchise. But I do think that's something that we should look at to see if it looks like our policy was in the right direction and want to know if this policy now will move us in the wrong direction. I wanted to just piggyback on a couple of things to say on this issue that I've been fighting for a long time. At the State House, we had to, you know, almost every week of fighting for this and never thought it'd be a day that we would come to, that Roe versus Wade would be overturned. I never thought a day would come that the Voting Rights Act would ever be touched, the enforcement section. And it seems to be a pattern to take us back to the days when these things were overturned and we looked to the federal government for protection, the Supreme Court for protection. Desegregation would have never happened without the Supreme Court backing some of the things that were challenged back then. It's amazing to see this Supreme Court to be more conservative than days when we were segregated and trying to come out of slavery. Never thought, and then that's how we couldn't have any black on the Supreme Court. I mean, there was no opportunity for diversity. As we have just celebrated Juneteenth Freedom and we're going into this holiday, July, the Fourth of July, and we're celebrating because we said we want to be free. America fought to be free. And when I look at this, we fought for independence. And when you look at overturning Roe versus Wade, we're going backwards on independence. Independence to make choices about our lives, about our bodies, about our existence. And so I've always been for choice as I come from an ancestry of slavery where we did not have choices. We had to go to certain bathrooms, our ancestors had to, couldn't go to certain schools, couldn't, couldn't have all of the freedoms that America fought for on this Fourth of July. We're gonna be running a red, white, and blue screaming that we are free. And Juneteenth, we were screaming, we are free. And so when I look at this, this issue with the backdrop of Independence Day, where you can make your own decision, your own choices, and we have Roe versus Wade, we're definitely sending a signal that we're starting to go backwards as it relates to the things that so many people fought and died for. It does not stop with Roe versus Wade. It opens a door to begin to take away all these different freedoms that we have fought for to make everyone have what they call independence. When you go to the doctor, I want independent, I want the doctor to give me an independent report on my health, and I had to make a decision. Had to make a decision on my knee, do I go with surgery? Or do I try to hop along and see if I'mma make it? I had to make a decision, but I sat down with the expert, with the doctor. If I do this, will it help me walk? And he has a medical coat on. He's gone to school, or she's gone to school. And I'm looking for the people with the white coats on that has the M.D., that's had the training, who are experts in that department. Now, none of you could go in the room with me to the doctor and make a decision whether or not I want to try to have this surgery so I can walk. I had to make an independent decision with my independent doctor who has all the medical records. And then I had to see, can I, can I pay for it? So when I think about this, certainly an invasion to tell me what to do, you don't come in with no doctor coat on. You come in not paying none of my medical expenses. And you gonna tell me what I got to do with my body. So as I look at the backdrop of Independence Day, it's not about fireworks. It's not about the red, white, and blue. It's about we fought, people fought and died. So this country, we wanted to be free, we wanted to be what? Independent. And as women and men that have to deal with this issue, they want to be independent. They want to have a choice. Now, many will say, I'm standing up for the unborn. I want to tell you, I'm standing up for the born. So we don't talk about that. We don't talk about once the baby come out. That's why the baby screaming sometimes, because when it come out, they come out, and some of them come out to poverty. When they come out, some of them come out and can't get no milk and no food. When they come out, sometimes they come out to violence. There's been Supreme Court decisions to allow for more violence, gun violence. So we have no protections once you're born. And we've been struggling, obviously, with jobs and family services and funding and all this stuff, because it's not enough people who care about the born. We don't have the services. And then when we do something for the born, the people who say they love the unborn are the ones saying it's a handout, it's a welfare, it needs to be cut. Who cares about the born? The mothers who need maternal and pre, prenatal care. You want to cut that budget, but you say you just love the babies. You love them until they come into the world. And so we, we've got to have one set of standards. In our foster care, we got too many kids that don't, they got no homes right now, looking for people that want to take them, love them, and do them right. This today, we got this, half this stuff is jobs and family services, foster care, foster this, foster that. No permanent homes, millions of dollars. But we say we just, just really want you to force you to have these babies. Who's standing up for the born? Same people are the ones that don't want to have any funding to help the born. Come out here in a world of no care, poverty, mental health issues, and we lock them up? We lock them up, and then jump up and say, why are we paying for all this? So I never thought I'd see a day where Roe versus Wade would be overturned. I never saw, thought of the day that the voting, I remember a lady told me, "Don't you worry about..." Young lady, I was in college, fighting David Duke, former KKK Grand Wizard, who was running for governor and wanted to shut down my college and make it the jail, all-black colleges, make them a jail. And I said, "We gotta stop, we gotta get this voting rights." And then I was worried, I said, "Man, voting rights is, it's not in the Constitution, we got to fight for it." And she said, "Young lady, don't worry about that, you're just too concerned, you're just a college student." They'll never touch voting rights. Guess what? I got to the legislature and they touched it. He told me, "Don't worry about Roe versus Wade, oh man, that's, oh, that's the past." Still, we never going back to those days. And here we are. And I just wanted to say, on the backdrop of the Fourth of July, not just for the, Independence Day, we can't be independent, make your own choice. Make your own choice about your body, own choice about your healthcare, own choice about your family. And we jump up and say independence. We going backwards. So I wanted to bring that up. And for those who care so much about having the babies contact the jobs and family services, we got a lot of them that's ready to be loved. Right now, ready to be with a family, ready to be loved, ready to be nurtured, cared for. It used to be all down, just like you out with your science, I need you down at jobs and family services, ready to sign up to take care of these children. Because that's what happens. We end up and we're child support, then we got to lock somebody up. Then a child ain't got the proper funding. And then we had a case, and we've had other cases where, which is what I don't want. Baby, they have a baby, don't tell their parents, they have a baby, and the baby in the dumpster. Why does a baby gotta come in this world like that? Come on, this baby didn't do nothing wrong. Baby dumped in the dumpster. I didn't see no people screaming with signs. Brand new baby in the dumpster. Another baby, we just talked, the young man's on trial. This is baby in a dumpster in a suburb. This ain't suburb versus inner city, this ain't black versus white. This was a Caucasian baby in a suburb in the dumpster. Then we go with African-American baby in a, in a, in a stroller. On trial now, they thinking the baby was thrown in Ohio River. Does a baby deserve that? No. So, once again, I think we going backwards, going backwards with, certainly people have the right to bear arms, but we got the right to be safe. Even the FOP saying, wait a minute. Certainly these types of guns that's being allowed to just walk around with is dangerous for the police. So this is not a Republican or Democratic issue, because many of the FOPs on the other side of my party. And they're jumping up saying, wait a minute, this ain't safe. We going up against some heavy artillery out here now. Then we got this Roe versus Wade overturned. We got infant mortality issues, we got maternal care issues. People can't get the right kind of care already. We going backwards. We're losing independence. Now, whether we like it, or we agree with it, or we don't agree with it, it's independence to make your own choice. And so I've been about that, keeping independence, I've been a fighter for independence. My ancestors fought for independence. Independence, and that's what we're doing here, we're opening the process. My own mother applied to work, it's just one generation over. She's younger, she applied to work here, got hired, everything. And they said, "You can't do it because you ain't in the right party." We made a mistake, we changing that now, we open up the process. You qualified, we trying to hire you. We don't care what your party you on. Because why we want to have opening up the process? So that's where I'm at on this. And obviously, it's a states' right issue, so you got to get to your state legislators and your governors and those kind of things. But again, my question is, who's standing up for the born? And if you stand up for the born, I need you to call right away, the jobs and family services. They've got children ready to go that want to be loved and raised and nurtured and led in a positive manner. Next, I want to talk about, Madam President. Apologize, I get a little emotional about that. But the next thing I want to talk about is that we had a disparity study that came in. And, and, you know, it gave us numbers that we already knew, but you got to go through the process legally to put those numbers in writing. I want to commend our administrator and administration, Jeff Aludo. As you know, when I came in, I was heavily on it, and I'm still on it, about opening the process. And as we're voting on millions of dollars, I don't want taxation without participation. But I want to say that the administration, we're not there yet, but we're moving in the right direction. This needle has been moved, we're still got to move some more. And obviously, the timing of the report coming out, we, we didn't control the timing. But I want to just say that we have one of the biggest equity and inclusion initiatives in the entire county. The banks, Ohio Banks, that has Paul Brown Stadium on one side that we own, and a Major League Baseball stadium where the Reds is our tenant that we own and everything in between. It was the first place that African-Americans came over for freedom and they lived there. It was on the flood plain, so you could live there because it wasn't the best property. They then were moved off of there into the West End. And the Brent Spence Bridge has some, some issues that helped divide that too. We won't talk about that right now. It's 198 acres, we didn't have one black business, we don't have one to this day. This board boldly decided that we would invest in a permanent tourism attraction. Now, we've been given the Convention and Business Bureau $2 million last year. We're talking about giving them $2 million this year on top of what they get. So if we could do that, we put that together and we're putting together something permanent. It's called the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. It is an equity project on the Ohio Banks. It is designed as a tourism attraction that will honor black musical artists, songwriters, producers, who have been left out of the conversation. It will enhance and connect. We've got Andrew Brady Music Center that is named after a Caucasian teacher from the West Side in the 30s. And now it will connect with the Black Music Walk of Fame, bringing the two together to have the totality of the story. It's going to be interactive, it's going to bring more tourists, it's going to bring more money back to the county. But this is a equity project. The only thing down there besides the Freedom Center, which was already there before we built everything else. And so I wanted to just highlight that at a time where we're talking about inclusion and equity. This board took a bold step. We're going to have a, a induction ceremony, it's free. It's Saturday, July 23rd, making it free, it's gonna even have Zap performing for free. And we're connecting it with the Cincinnati Music Festival, the oldest African-American music festival in the United States. The largest music festival African-American in, celebrating African-American music in the Midwest. It is also our largest economic impact weekend of any race, bringing in about $107 million of economic impact each year. It had been down for three years. And so we knew that this is a moneymaker that brings tourists, that brings people to our county, that fills up our hotels, that brings money to the coffers. And those dollars are what's been able to help us pay for the Convention Center debt we've got that we're expanding both in Cincinnati and Sharonville. And will help us as we move forward with other convention things that we have to do. It also helped us put $2 million into the Convention and Visitors Bureau to sell Cincinnati and Hamilton County. So it comes in from this festival, but it spreads out throughout the county. I just want to say that this board made a bold step to say that we must reinvest in this music festival. And we're the largest investor in terms of cash to get it back on its feet this year, just like right now in New Orleans, Essence is back on their feet. We got to get it back on our feet. And so we take a bold step to invest in that. And I want to thank the board and the, Jeff, our administrator, and all of the, Holly, everybody who put all these things together, Mark, to make it happen. Included in that is a smaller festival called the Festival 513, put on by Minister Bumani Taimba, who has been doing it for over 20 years. And has always had the vendors, made sure vendors could be a part of this. It is connected to Paul Brown Stadium. And we're happy to report, we were able to help him get back up. As President Dumas talked about, we've been helping small businesses all along. So these are some bold, permanent, economic impactful investments that we've made and the largest equity and inclusion project to date. And I appreciate the others, they talk about what they doing at the city and all, they ain't doing this. This is big. So I know that we continue to have work to do. We talking about complex contract compliance, we gonna do those things. But I encourage you to go down there and see them building. And we're not hiding, this is on the banks. This is across from Paul Brown Stadium. We had to get Paul Brown Stadium, Bengals to approve because it's a Monday Night Football shop. We had to get, work with the symphony because we're their neighbor with the Andrew Brady Center. And so we're pulling all these pieces together. And we're moving from 15% and 10%, 5%. We got to get to partnerships. I did all that when I was, when I first started out 25 years ago. We were trying to, we got to get a disparity study in 5% and 10%. We going to partnerships now, like they do in Atlanta. Let's work together in partnership. And so that's what we're doing, and I didn't want people to lose focus on that. And although our report came out now, but we don't, we, there's a lot of stuff we're doing as a board. And I want to say that Essence Magazine did a story on what we're doing here in Hamilton County with the Black Music Walk of Fame. That's the largest black lifestyle magazine in the country. Seven million folks just on Facebook alone, hearing what we're doing. They will be in town, Black Enterprise will be in town, Cafe Mocha will be in town. And I want to thank Source Cincinnati, who's, who's working on these things as well, Anastasia, and others who are working, we're all working together to put these pieces together. So, Madam President, I just wanted to take a moment for people to understand that our board has been taking some bold steps, doing some bold things and around equity and inclusion. And when our bus gets back up, it's called the Equity and Inclusion 513 Relief Bus. We help 4,000 people all over Hamilton County. So we are making lots of strides. Of course, we got a lot of work to do, because we coming a long way since the 1800s where we were left out. But we have done some bold things and we've done it in partnership for all of Hamilton County, fiscally responsible, bringing more money in, stretching the dollars and making sure people are included. And I just wanted to take a moment for us to acknowledge that and for people to put on their calendar, completely free, July 23rd, at the Andrew Brady Center. And we'll have the inductees that will be there, and the Star is going to ground, and Phil is here, been working hard on that project. Lincoln Ware was just in yesterday, helping with the narrative pieces. This place is going to be amazing. This is going to be interactive, amazing for all the families can come and have a good time and learn about our history in a tourism experiential type of way. So wanted to just highlight that, because I know we had our session on disparity study, which I thought was good. And anybody that's working on disparities, like I got to say this. If you coming up here and you a consultant, you working on inclusion and disparity, I'm expecting you to know what we're doing. I'm expecting you to know that this county is working and we, I don't want you just come up here with a report and tell me I'll get to work. I want you to get out here and see what we're doing. We got an equity and inclusion bus that's been out here to help over 4,000 people. We have a Black Music Walk of Fame. And if you have never heard of it and haven't seen it, maybe you don't need to be our consultant, because the hard hat's up, they banging and they got stuff going up, excavators is out there, field got a ball out there, trucks out there, dirt being turned. We don't went from rocks to walls going up, interactive and all this. If you don't know it, maybe we got to relook and get some people that knows what's going on. Because you can't give us good advice if you don't know what's going on. And Hamilton County, I'm just going to do some brag. We got it going on, and we still got some work to do, but we got it going on. We doing a lot of things, boldly, quickly, and very creatively and responsibly. So we want to make sure we got consultants that know, this is not the old disparity study when I was down at City Hall. But we got some things going on, and we want to have the people that can help talk about what we have done and then show, yes, these are some other things we need to do. So I'll just leave with that, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse, did you want to make any comments?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam President, I appreciate the opportunity. Things, I too wanted to weigh in, Roe versus Wade decision at the federal level. So, you know, I was raised ethically and considered myself to be pro-life for many years. As such, while in the legislature, I brought differing sides together to find common ground regarding issues such as contraception and sex education. And I've always felt that we should work together to reduce unintended pregnancies. And so while I have respect for people on either side of the abortion debate, I'm deeply saddened and concerned about the inflection point that we're at now with the reversal of Roe v. Wade. And I've come to recognize that access to healthcare for women varies, it cannot be viewed through a single lens. The decision to have an abortion is deeply personal and informed by a variety of complex factors. So my thinking on this issue has changed, and I am grateful that so many women have been willing to engage in very difficult conversations to broaden perspectives. So the government should have no role in a woman's personal healthcare decisions. I will continue to protect women's access to healthcare and focus on what matters to Hamilton County families. So that is where I am on this issue. I too have asked the administration to better help us understand our role as county commissioners related to this issue, because we have very limited authority related to this. And so I too wanted to get a better understanding of what that was. So I'm anxious to hear the explanation there from the administration. In addition to that, I would just pile on a little bit related to tourism and bringing economic development to the county. I was able to represent the commission at the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church 40th General Conference. When they, well, actually, they're still in Cincinnati. We had a kickoff over at the Convention Center with Bishop Lawrence Reddick. He's the senior bishop and CEO of the CME. And I was proud to represent the commission there and welcome them to the city of Cincinnati and to Hamilton County to make sure that they felt very welcome as they continue to have their people move around our, our city and enjoy everything that Hamilton County has to offer. And then lastly, I also delivered the proclamation to the Pride Celebration on Saturday after the parade. They have this big event always, every year, and the commission always provides the proclamation for that. And so I provided the proclamation that afternoon on behalf of the commission. And that's all of that.
Thank you so much. Okay, Vice President Reese.
I'm sorry, I forgot one other thing, I would just want to highlight the Relief-a-thon. One of the things I had worked on creating when I first got here, we did it virtual, but this time, this year, we were able to do it in person. So I do want to acknowledge the staff that worked on this. We had it at the Village of Woodlawn this past Saturday. And we had people go all the way down Woodlawn Boulevard, all the way to Springfield Pike. The, the need is still there. We were there with everything from vaccinations, which, you know, you saw Kentucky cut off their, their testing. We had testing and vaccination at free of charge. We had people there with Duke Energy, Waterworks, Jobs and Family Services, with all the computers working together to help getting people pay their bills and keep their lights on, especially this holiday coming up. So we're able to help a lot of people. Certainly, we can keep improving the model, but it was real. It's, it's something that, you know, you came there, we were there to try to help you and help as many people, but I want to say that the help is still needed. And we saw that by the number of people that showed up who needed help. And I just want to commend our staff for moving forward and continuing to be out there. People are telling me, well, I'm glad this is not a public relations fair. This is one to help people with the funding and to get relief. So just wanted to acknowledge that and thank Mayor Brian Poole from Village of Woodlawn for hosting us and allowing us to be there this past Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a couple items, I'm glad that both my colleagues brought up about our ability to deal with the Roe v. Wade situation and that we're under a different covering than the city of Cincinnati, as Alicia Reese has mentioned, that it's home rule for the city of Cincinnati. So we take our lead from the state of Ohio. So I too are very interested in what administration comes up with. And it was also mentioned about the disparity study, my understanding it's on our website. Okay, and so if you were not able to, to watch the presentation, you can get on our Hamilton County website and take a look at that. Wanted to mention about the LGBTQ flag is still up until, actually, until today. It was for the whole month, so it's still up. And then July 1st ends our ability to have virtual meetings. So we will be in person from now on. I also attended the HIV testing. They had it at New Prospect Baptist, and we presented a proclamation there. So it was very well attended. I'd like to, before I- Um, I'd like to, before I go to you, Jeff, um, Commissioner Dree House, are you able to stay through the whole meeting? I know specifically, um, my understanding, um, item 12 is something that you are, uh, want to speak about. Are you able to stay for the whole meeting?
Yeah, I will.
Very good. Thank you. So now our county administrator, Jeff Aludo.
Thank you, Madam President. Just very quickly, no by leave items today, but, uh, number one, just to, uh, pile on to Commissioner Reese's comments. Just want to thank all the employees who were out there at the relief-a-thon, uh, this weekend. Served, uh, roughly 500, uh, individuals needing assistance, um, from rental and utility assistance, vaccines, et cetera. So I just want to thank all the employees who, uh, were a part of that. Um, all, all three commissioners have brought up, uh, today and separately, issues related to the implications of, of the Roe v. Wade decision. So the administration is working on an assessment of our policies, procedures, um, uh, as it relates to, uh, that decision. We'll be providing a report back to the board. And finally, just want to wish, uh, all county employees a, uh, happy and healthy and safe Fourth of July holiday. So with that, Madam President, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, we'll go to our regular agenda. Our engineer.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Got several items here today for you. Um, the first two are both related to the Howard Road improvements, uh, that, uh, extend from Lee's Creek to the Butler County line. So item number one is a resolution determining, uh, that no land or, or property will be damaged and, uh, determining for the public convenience and welfare, the improvements to Howard Road and Harrison Township. Uh, this is project 502 016. Uh, we have funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission in the amount of $202,684. Um, $374,866 from the Permissive Auto Funds and $22,450 from Southwest Water District. This item will allow us to take this project out to bid.
Thank you so much. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution for the Howard Road Project, uh, inter, intergovernmental relate, uh, agreement between Hamilton County and Harrison Township. Harrison Township partnered with, uh, the engineer's office in obtaining the Ohio Public Works Funds. And this, uh, agreement allows us to, uh, work with them for the project.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item number three is a resolution setting the viewing and hearing dates, um, and directing the petitioner to prepare and submit a survey plat um, and for the vacation of right of way for Spencer Avenue in Sycamore Township. Uh, this petition was presented by the trustees of the township. We have sent them all the information and we would like to, uh, uh, for the board to set a viewing date of July 20th and a hearing date of July 28th.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Make a motion to adopt item three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House.
Yeah.
Item number four is a resolution to award the low bid for Bernie Lane, uh, culvert replacement, project 502 111. Uh, the engineer's estimate was 205,000. The low bid was 170,495 dollars and 88 cents by, uh, Rack and Ballower Excavating Company. Um, and we're asking for approval of that contract.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd make a motion to adopt item four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House.
Yeah.
Okay. Item number five is vacation of a portion of fee right of way for Willow Road located in Sims Township. Um, this was requested by two property owners on Willow Road, uh, was forwarded to the engineer's office by the board on, uh, April 21st. It has been determined that the right of way for a township road, and it can be disposed of following a public hearing. We have sent the, uh, required paperwork to the petitioner. Once they submit that, we will schedule a, uh, hearing date for the viewing and the hearing.
Thank you. Any discussion on item five?
No.
Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item five.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House.
Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract to the lowest and best bidder for Development Corp. for the rehab improvement of Hopper Road Culvert, which is project 501 821. Our engineer's estimate was 381,000. The low bid was 287,106 dollars and 72 cents. And this, uh, is funded by the Permissive Auto Fund.
Thank you. Any discussion on item six?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'd make a motion to adopt item six.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House.
Yeah.
Item number seven is a resolution entering into, uh, general engineering consultant agreements for the calendar year of 2022 for six engineering firms. Um, we went up for requests for qualifications back in December. We rated all the firms that applied. The top six are the ones we're recommending awarding contracts to. These contracts would be in the maximum amount of $40,000 each on an as-needed basis during the year. Uh, those six firms are AECom, IBI Group, the Kleininger's Group, Stan Tech, Strand Associates and Woolport. And all that funding will come from Permissive Auto. Shall it be used?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it, the diversity of having so many consulting services. I think you, you were doing this though before we even brought it up, weren't you?
Yes, we've been doing this for a number of years.
Yeah, great. Uh, any discussion?
Uh, Madam President, yes, I do have a question. Um, I just want to, Mr. Beck, I know one of the things that, uh, you've been doing, we were just talking about the disparity study and you've been working with us, uh, your, um, department. You don't have to because you're independently elected, but you've always been able to work with us. And I know that you're looking at the engineering area, um, the things that you cover. I'm still learning everything, you, you know, you have everything about the roads and everything. But, um, you were saying that you were having some type of outreach to get more diversity included and these kind of things. I'm, I'm not familiar with any of these companies.
Right. None, none of these are, um, to the best of my knowledge. Um, we do send out, we have to follow the Ohio Revised Code when we do our general engineering. So we have to send out a, uh, request for qualifications. We review the qualifications. That is one of the items we've looked at. I went back and looked at all of the firms that actually submitted for this one, and there was no minority ones in there. Um, but we are making, we're reaching out to try to make sure we contact all of those in the future. Make sure they're aware of it. But we, we post this on our website, allow them to, anyone that wants to, that's qualified can apply.
Okay. Yes, I appreciate that. I just think for so much, so long, um, before your leadership came in, um, in terms of you, you getting elected and so forth. This is new to a lot of people. And I had a couple of people that are engineers, but I don't know what area because that's not my expertise. What I've been trying to do is encourage them to get in touch with you all. Because their whole thing is, is this real? Do they really want? And I'm trying to let them know, we got some new day, it's new leadership. So, um, I don't know if there's something, you're always coming up with great creative ideas, but something that can, um, maybe through Mr. Bale and yourself, an outreach for engineers to know that we're like, what, what is it the needs?
What we're looking for, yeah.
Yeah. And then when people know we're serious, they'll apply. But sometimes people think, oh, they just want to put me on check the box. And so we're letting them know, we're not checking the boxes anymore. If you're qualified and you can bid and win, you have a real opportunity. So I just will ask, because these groups will be on, like you said, you'll be utilizing them as needed.
Correct.
And it would just be great to have some diversity on that list. And I think some of it might just be, they don't, they haven't had that interaction before. And I know with your, you know, your leadership and creativity that you got going now, that might be an opportunity before the bid comes out to just kind of get a, what, what does the engineer office need and what are some opportunities?
Great point, and that's something we're working on internally as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Dree House?
No question.
Okay. So I, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item seven.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have MSD next.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Lauren DeGrecia, um, with MSD. I have Matt Spadari also with me today. We have three items on the agenda. Uh, item number eight, uh, first is MSD's Little Miami Wastewater Treatment Plant Standby Power Project. Uh, this request is for approval to proceed with construction and appropriation of $21,223,000. This project is part of the Consent Decree Wet Weather Improvement Program and is located at the Little Miami Plant, which is located in the east end neighborhood of the city of Cincinnati and treats much of the wastewater of the eastern side of Hamilton County. This project is needed because existing electrical equipment at the plant and the related four-mile pump station has reached the end of its useful life and is in need of replacement. Additionally, this project is needed to provide electrical expansion necessary to complete other anticipated future whip projects at the plant, including solids disposal and odor control, enhanced high-rate treatment and pump station improvements. The project's scope includes various electrical improvements, including installation of new equipment for the four-mile pump station for more operational efficiency, a new electrical building at the plant that will be sufficiently sized to provide up to 13 megawatts of power to enable standby power, and new electrical conduit rerouted to the new electrical building to provide power throughout the plant. Uh, the requested amount of funding is within the amount indicated for this project in the approved 2022 CIP. Uh, it's approximately $2.5 million less. And with that, we recommend approval. You can take any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions? Vice President Reese. Commissioner Dree House?
No question.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item eight.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House.
Yeah.
Item number nine is the Union Cemetery Road Local Sewer Project. And this request is also for construction, for approval and appropriation of $333,000 to construct a local sewer on Union Cemetery Road in Sims Township, uh, to provide sewer service to four properties. This project is an assessment project, meaning that a portion of the project costs not to exceed $12,000 per parcel. Will ultimately be assessed to each of the benefited properties. Uh, this project was initiated by petition and is supported by all four of the owners uh, of the benefited properties, which include three single-family residences and one undeveloped parcel. Uh, this project will facilitate the abandonment of three existing home sewage treatment systems at those residences. And the total project cost, excuse me, estimated project cost is $349,500. And based on that estimate, the benefited properties will fund approximately 14% of the total project costs and MSD will fund the remaining 86%. And when construction is completed and all project costs are paid, these properties will be included in MSD's, excuse me, MSD's annual final assessment legislation, uh, which the board just approved, not, not too long ago, a few weeks ago. And if approved by the board, their share of the project costs will be assessed at that time and they can pay upfront or pay through their property taxes, which is generally spread out over 20 years. I can take any questions.
Thank you. I, I believe you said 349,000 and we have 333,000.
So we are requesting 333,000 for construction. Uh, the total project cost, including construction as well as design, anything else included in the budget, uh, the total is 349,500.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Commissioner Dree House?
No discussion.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item nine.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dree House.
Yeah.
And item number 10 is the Whitewater Township Regional Sewer and Water District, uh, State Route 128 Sewer Extension. Um, if you recall, Chris Hable, the attorney for Whitewater, provided a presentation on this a few weeks ago at your staff meeting. Um, and the current request before you today is for approval and authorization to execute an addendum to the existing 2010 amended and restated inter-district agreement between Hamilton County and Whitewater Township Regional Sewer District. Um, it is a regional sewer district that operates within Whitewater Township. And this existing agreement governs the respective roles and responsibilities of Hamilton County MSD and Whitewater in terms of providing sewer service to that area. Whitewater, as you know, is seeking additional coordination and funding participation from the commissioners in MSD in order to construct this project, um, in an area that is currently unsued. Um, this addendum sets forth the terms by which the parties will jointly participate in this project. Uh, just to give a general overview of the addendums terms, um, this is Whitewater's project. As, as Chris Hable explained, they've designed it and they will construct it. Uh, but it will ultimately flow to the MSD sewer system for treatment. And, um, if all requirements are met and set forth in this agreement, then the board and MSD will assume ownership and operation of the newly constructed sewer. Uh, the new customers will pay MSD tap fees as well as sewer charges. And in terms of project funding, uh, for design, this board has already approved and appropriated funds for the design and MSD has paid and, uh, will continue to pay, uh, to provide funds to Whitewater under this agreement. And for construction, Whitewater is seeking funding from grant and loan sources. And the addendum states that the county through MSD will pay the debt on any loans subject to the board's final approval of the amount and the terms of that loan. So today MSD is not requesting any new funds. Uh, this legislation is strictly to approve the execution of this agreement for you. Um, if this project progresses as we anticipate, we will be back to request appropriation of funds.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on this item?
Uh, nope, Madam President, I think we had an extensive discussion on this, so I'm fine with it.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item 10.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, we will move forward on our consent agenda items. There are a few that I'd like to just summarize and let, um, our people know, our constituents know what we're voting on because there's a lot of money involved in these consent agenda items. Um, I'm just going to move down to, um, of course, um, item 14 is a resolution awarding construction contract for Shell and fit out for the Finley Market Garage, which is 12.6 million. We have someone here if you have questions about that. We also, item 15 is a resolution for the Banks Project Variable Message Signs Phase for 5.5 million dollars. Uh, item 16, under, uh, administration, we have a 1.1, uh, allocation for, uh, invitation to bid, um, on behalf of the engineer's department. Item 17, um, and actually 17, 19, 20, 21 and 22, um, the sheriff department is replacing some of their old vehicles as relates to ma- mileage and wear and tear. So they are, um, changing some of their cars out, which is common. Um, and so some, a Durango for 25,000. We have, um, four Explorers SUVs that are used for so many different purposes in the sheriff department for 147,000 and a couple of other vehicles. Um, item 23, um, our new, uh, communication center that we're getting started and approved, uh, for radio and emergency communications, the operation system. We need to, uh, approve as quickly as we can to, to get the costs that are now on the market for 3 million. Item 24, um, that's another van on behalf of the facilities, uh, department, uh, that's coming through. Item, um, number 26, our test and protect, our work with the Health Collaborative. We felt that we needed to continue to, uh, keep money in that area for 214,000. And then we go, go down to, um, under Human Resources, the Legal Aid Society of Greater Cincinnati, uh, their work with Job and Family Services for $760,000 for approval. And item 31, um, we look at services for, for children. And there's, uh, parenting time and visitation services for $600,000 through Job and Family Services. Item 32 is family preservation continuum services for 200,000. Item 33 is money for parenting time visitation services, 2.4 million, uh, through Job and Family Services. Uh, item 34 is foster care for 100,000. And then item 35 is Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center. Um, they will provide medical screenings for our young people and, uh, those that are involved with Job and Family Services for 213,000. And, uh, we move on to Children's Hospital Medical Center. They will be working with HCJFS for nursing consultation services for $767,000. And of course- And of course, we have our monthly investment report that was submitted by the Treasurer's Office. I did purposely skip item number 12. If we can discuss each of the items other than item 12, and we'll get to item 12, or is there any discussion on the consent items other than item 12?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I got a couple. Item number 11, I just want to highlight, we had a full presentation. This is coming from our Hamilton County Economic Development Department powered by Alloy, and that is a project in Woodland, the village of Woodland. I just want to say that we're talking about expanding and jobs, and I got a chance to talk to the mayor on Saturday. He was very ecstatic about this, and he wanted me to send a message back to the board to say, if you move forward, thank you, and to let us know that, he said, Woodland is on the move. So he wanted me to tell you that. You know Mayor Brian Poole and his enthusiasm. So glad to see it on the consent agenda and getting this moved forward with more jobs in a time when this very tough economy. Also wanted to highlight, I wanted to highlight these two items, 14 and 15. One is, I wanted to get, I know it's a $12,000, $12 million for the Finley Market Garage. Wanted to just get, what is that? What are we looking at on total cost? I know this is, this, we had, is this the one we bid back out, and we got the lower bids?
Yes, correct. Philbeck County Construction Executive. Yes, we had a larger package that was bid earlier this year. Bids came in too high to award, so we broke that scope up into two different bid packages. You had already awarded the rebid, the first rebid that came in within budget, and this is the second of the two, which is also within budget. The, we received three bids for this package. The low bid is to Monarch Construction, the 12,9647. The next, the next bid was Turner. They were $53,000 higher. And then the third bid was Universal. They were 5,000 higher than Turner. So all three bids were extremely tight on a magnitude of 12.6, 12.7 million. Yeah, so that tells us we were, you know, our target is accurate.
Well, great. We appreciate that. And this is our Finley Market Garage slash commitment for the FC parking as well. What's the total cost of the project? I guess that's the part of it.
The construction is in magnitude 25 million.
Okay, all right. Okay, and while you're up there, item number 15 deals with the signage, and I had brought this up to both Jeff and you privately, but just wanted to acknowledge, now we got these signs and the new technology to tell people where to park when they're going down to the Bengals game, and I hear all the, all the season tickets are sold out and everything, so it's going to even be more people coming down. But we also have other activities, obviously the Reds, we also have concerts, we've got the music festival, et cetera. But one of the things I had concerns about is that it was already, I call it broken, because I went down, saw the sign, it was, you know, going up and down, up and down. And can you give us update on that? Because people say, well, are we doing this on these signs? And we ain't even had them a year, and they breaking down.
Right, so the most recent phase of signage is outside of each of the entries to the various garages and surface lots. So there's about 20 total of those signs, and some of those signs are experiencing what we call pixelation issues. Their matrix board signage, they are all under warranty, and the contractor is being notified. We've had informal discussions with them, so they, you know, it boils down to supply chain issues. Once again, I hate to say it, but, but they're aware. So in the meantime, the clock is ticking on our warranty, so we're going to go ahead and put them on notice in writing so that we've, we've got that in the file.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that, because we don't want warranties going out, and then we got to be stuck with the bill.
Right.
But I had some disappointment in their work. Now, this one, are we dealing with the same people, or are we getting somebody else for this?
Well, this will be bid, so it's, I don't know who will, will be the low bidder on it, but there are a number of different vendors that provide this technology.
Okay, and on here you say lowest and best. We need to use best as our, because I don't want to go, if they, if their chips ain't in, and they can't get our warranty, and the thing is going up and down, up and down, it just looks terrible. So I think they should be put to the side or something. They can't be the best if their stuff is malfunctioning. So please exercise the best part of it so that we can get the best company to not have, you know, we haven't even had these a year. I think it was like a year, we, last year we voted on it, we were excited about it. And I mean, I'm just telling you about it, but it was months ago. This thing was zipping up and down, up and down. Looks terrible. So they can't be the best if their stuff is malfunctioning already and they can't get it corrected. So just want to put that out there. We go, sometimes we go get low, but when you go low, you know, it's going to cost us more if our warranty runs out, and it costs us if it ain't working. We got months of this thing not working right. So that's costing our taxpayer dollars. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'm glad you're going to put them on notice, and I'm sure Jeff and our, our lawyers will get on it very strongly so the clock doesn't not tick. But if they're out of chips and all that, they don't need to be coming in trying to get more if they can't get, get the thing we already got working.
Understood.
The other thing I wanted to just do on the signage, I just wanted to bring this up. I'd like to see us on our signage, we have other signs that talk about when you're on the highway, where to get off. We do, I think, pretty good job of that. I want to make sure the music fest, we got music fest, we got the Reds game, we've got the Black Music Walk of Fame, we got Festival 513, we got, I mean, we humping, and we haven't had this type of energy because of, obviously COVID didn't let us do it with multiple different components. And so I had asked Mr. Administrator, maybe this is for you, but I want to make sure that we have signage for the Black Music Walk of Fame, where to get off, where to park for the music fest, where to get off, where to park. So I'd like to see that. And I also asked about these billboard, digital billboards. I don't know what our contract says. I know we're the landlords, we're, we're not the tenants, but I don't know what it is. We have the Reds, they have an LED board, and so does the Bengals when you drive in. It's an LED board on our Paul Brown Stadium. I don't know if that falls up under us. Obviously, it should. I would like to see if we could get some signage on there, welcoming people and, and talking about the Black Music Walk of Fame. So just wanted to highlight those two, those things under the, the theme of signs.
Yeah, the first, I will coordinate that with Joe Felkamp as well as our colleagues at the city, City Department of Transportation and Engineering. And then that group then also coordinates with ODOT for the highway signage, so I'll make sure that that gets taken care of. And the other one, coordinate with Joe Felkamp.
Thank you, Administrator. Okay, thank you. I just saw signs, so I had to get all of it with signage. That's all I have for that. But item number 17, and we go down, Madam President, I had said this verbally. I, we've been just so busy, haven't been able to send anything formally out, but I will send something out to all of our offices, a memo or a motion or something. I'd have to look at our, we were buying a lot of cars. Gas is jumping through the roof, $5 a gallon and all of that. Wanted to look at what is our, you know, I don't know if electric cars is the thing to go, way to go, but I know that OKI is putting in all these stations and all that. I don't know if that's going to be for the future or the past, because we can't get chips in. But I want us to look at, the Administrator put a group together, and it would have different departments, the shares, the engineers, those who have the fleet of cars, before we start buying all these new cars, seeing what can we do for, as it relates to, you know, energy efficiency. Are we investing in things that, you know, is going to be the future, reduce costs? Be environmental friendly? I don't have the answers, but I think if the Administrator pulled the, all the different people together, because every week we're, we're buying more cars. I mean, we're, we got a lot of fleet that we're buying. So just want to get a plan that we can move, and all of us can look at it, and make sure that we're doing something responsible, especially now with gas jumping through the roof. So I know I had mentioned it, I had talked about it, but I will send something formally to the board. But I would hope that our board could maybe put something forward, at least have a group that is put together, and their job is to come back to us, you know, in 90 days or whatever. Because I know once we buy these cars, it's not like a one-year car. We go, these cars are in for four, five years. So we want to make sure before we invest, we have a plan of how we're doing it, make sure it's environmentally friendly, and make sure it's energy efficient. And of course, we want to make sure it works, because like you said, the sheriff car has, has some power if they got to run after somebody. We can't go, oh man, battery's dead, battery's dead. We can't do that, but we can be responsible and invest in the future. And so anyway, just wanted, I had mentioned it, I had talked about it, but I will put it in writing for all of us for something like that. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just very quickly, on that note, so a couple of things, especially for folks watching at home. We do have electric charging stations in many of our garages now that we, that we build. We also, we've talked with the purchasing department about when we go out to bid, making sure that electric and hybrid vehicles are included, and alternative fuel vehicles are included as an option in all of our bids that the departments can select from that. And following up on what you've said, Commissioner Reese will work with departments to understand when and where that makes sense, so what the plan is. It's one thing to have it in the, in the bid as an option, but also structuring an intentional plan to make sure that we diversify our portfolio as much as possible so that we limit our impact to some of these fuel spikes that we're seeing, et cetera. So we'll get back to the board on that here shortly.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I just think we probably want to move toward a direction of, you know, I know, like you said, we want to have some kind of a policy, that we understand that, you know, each department has to look at what works. But we want to make sure that, like you said, we have some type of directional policy that we want to, of course, we want to make sure that we're environmentally friendly, of course, economical, but also we understand that there's other needs. I mean, I don't know that, I'm not a mechanic, so I don't know if, you know, that electric car can catch one of those cars. I don't, you know, that has to, you know, we got to make sure that sheriff car can move. So we want to make sure of that, but we also want to make sure we're invested, like you said, in the future. We got all these charging stations, but we ain't gotten, we ain't charging enough. All our cars got to be at the gas station, so we want to work on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse, did you have any comments other than the other one we're going to discuss?
Yeah, I have, I have just two things. One is related to item 13, which is the reappointment to some folks to the Economic Inclusion Council. And so I just did want to thank them for their service, and I'm happy to support those reappointments to that council. They have given us some very good recommendations and wisdom as we move forward in this space, and so I just want to note that one. And the second thing, I too was concerned about all the cars. And I think we've, we've talked about this a couple of times. I have been participating in the Cincinnati Green Plan, or I guess it's called the Green Cincinnati Plan, where the city is looking at policies related to not only vehicles, but other things that are related to green infrastructure, like buildings and lights and solar panels and all that kind of stuff. And so my office has started to draft a resolution related not only to electric cars, but some other things that might move us into a direction of being more green as a county. And my understanding is that we've got a meeting soon with our chiefs of staff and our staff members to try to sort through where we all are collectively on these issues, you know, have it discussed at a staff meeting so that we can not only know what we've already done as a county, but where we might be able to go to become more green. And I think that meeting's supposed to happen in a couple of weeks. So totally on the same page, Commissioner Reese, as you are related to the vehicles, and want to make sure that, that is a piece of a plan that we put forward that takes in not only that, but a number of different items related to being green, whether it's, you know, I think our stormwater, the environmental solid waste piece, you know, if it says the facilities, we've done quite a bit there. But I think we need to have, I know I do, a reminder about what we've already done and what we might be able to do moving forward.
Thank you. As we talk about the charging stations, Jeff, we also, we've talked about this before. I think Eric has brought it up, to be able to repair those electrical cars. And so as, since we do already have charging stations, the forward thinking of, how do we get a group together? Or how do we look at the training that's taking place to be able to, so we don't have to get consultants for that purpose, you know? Okay, very good. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt items 11 and 13 through 37.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah.
Thank you. And Commissioner Drehouse, I'd like for you, if you would like to lead the discussion on item 12.
Thank you. We did discuss this at our last meeting related to an appointment to a board position at the Solid Waste Policy Committee. So as was discussed at the previous meeting, Tony DiPuccio and another person applied for that position. Tony has this role since the inception of the Solid Waste Policy Committee and has, from my vantage, real depth of knowledge here as to the work of the policy committee and the industry in general. And so there was a subcommittee that was formed to people, and the votes of the voting four who were allowed to participate in that vote, three to one voted to have Tony continue to serve. So some of the conversations in the policy meeting talked about the balance on the board, how we have a vast variety of views on the policy committee. And I think some of that played out when we were talking about the rules related to solid waste disposal facilities. But the balance and the variety of views is the strength of the group, where we hear from all sides and then make decisions related to what we've heard. And so I think there is some interest in retaining that kind of balance. I think Gray Testament in particular mentioned that. And we also heard, to the point that was made in public comment, we heard from our attorneys that there is no conflict of interest. And remember that Mr. DiPuccio has been serving for quite a few years on this committee. And so, but we did revisit the issue and asked once again if there was a conflict, and the answer was no. And so, you know, uncomfortable with that legal opinion that we've been operating under for many years related to Mr. DiPuccio's service on this committee. So that is the overview of the issue, and we held it two weeks ago, and it is now on the agenda again for vote of this commission.
Okay. Thank you so much. I have a few comments. First of all, I want to thank the Prosecutor's Office for their opinion that there is no conflict of interest, so certainly respect that. I have received many, many comments from the public. Did not receive really anything from Mr. DiPuccio as far as his commitment or his desire to stay on the, on the, on the committee itself. Not that he had to, well, I'm just saying I did not receive anything from him specifically. His position would be for a position of waste generator representative to the solid waste management. I'm not convinced that his position and what he does, he would qualify as a waste generator representative. I've done, you know, some research on this myself. And also, it was said that it's not a conflict of interest, but there are many ways you can look at conflict of interest. And if there is a perceived conflict of interest for many reasons, that as government officials, we need to have a, you know, a body that has integrity and look at how our constituents look at it, to look at the fact that we are doing new things with new rules. We put in rules that we've never had before. And so I'd certainly appreciate Mr. DiPuccio's commitment to this committee since 2008, and don't want to devalue that in any way. I've not, I'm not convinced that it's not a conflict. At least, I'm not a lawyer. It's a perceived conflict of interest. Once again, I don't see him as a representative of the waste generator representative. And in addition, there was some talk that if there was a vote to come up, he could recuse his
there was some talk that if there was a vote to come up, he could recuse himself. Well, really, conflict of interest says you don't want to have any undue influence on other people, so not only not vote, but should not be involved in the discussion. And it's my understanding, of course, being a member, he's been involved in the discussion may, which may indicate that the undue influence may take place. Not in agreement with his appointment, but I will be open to other comments. Vice President Reese?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. You know, I admit, I don't know Mr. DiPuccio, so I, I can't really comment directly on, on him. I know he's been on there and very much appreciative. However, I know that the board has indicated, when possible, we want to open it up and give some new people opportunities. We've been doing some outreach and just kind of opening up the process for some, you know, new thoughts, new opportunities to come in and participate. And so just keeping with that particular theme and the fact that, you know, you mentioned new rules and the people who advocated for the new rules are the ones who have an issue with this particular appointment. So, you know, just, I think it might be an opportunity to open up and, you know, let some, let somebody new participate. You know, so again, it's nothing personal because I don't really know the names of the people that are involved. So I'm inclined to open up the process and maybe let, that, you know, let someone new have an opportunity.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to see if there's a motion to adopt this resolution.
I, what, so yes, I would, and Wendy, can I just add one thing?
Sure.
So the Policy Committee did deliberate on this. We had a discussion, we had comments. It was a three to one vote for, of moving Mr. DiPuccio to continue to represent the Waste Generators Committee. So I do want to note that there is another position opening up soon. And we are looking for, it's a person with community interests. And Karen Hurley serves well in that role now. I think she does want to step aside. And so we are recruiting for that position as well. So we are, when, when there is a position opening, we try very hard to be as inclusive as possible and gauge interest, people wanting to apply. We only had two people apply for this particular position, so I don't want that to get lost in the conversation. And there is another one coming up and we will, once again, encourage as many people as possible to apply for these positions. So that has been the tone, the Policy Committee, and will continue to be the tone, to be as open as possible. There just was not that much interest in the waste generator position around two applications. So that said, I will move that we approve of this item on the agenda.
If I could just make a comment, Commissioner Drehouse, and I was aware of the other person who put in, but at this point did not even want to, as far as a board, even deal with that other option, but to deal with this one first, so. So you can proceed.
I did. I just moved that we approve of item twelve.
Okay. Is there a second? Hearing no second, the item dies, correct?
Yes.
Okay, the item fails. Okay, thank you so much. So, let me see what else we have. I think that was it. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah.
Thanks.